She'll be joining us, but she had some other conflicts over here since she can. Arm's here, so we're ready to get started. And we have two items on the work session agenda today. And so let's just go ahead and get started, Dr. Gardner, with the enrollment forecast discussion.
Well, let me just say, first of all, I want to welcome the various members from the county staff who are here as well. As we do this work, I think it's really important to recognize that we're all in this together. And this really is joint work. This is not the school system versus the county. This is the us, not the US, not the VS. So, welcome, and we're glad to have you here.
I think I'll start us off by just sort of setting a little bit of context before we get going. So, good afternoon. At this point, I believe that everyone is aware that our 2018-19 enrollment was smaller than projected. While we projected almost 1,900 new students, the unverified count provided to the Northern Department of Public Instruction showed a net growth of 42 students. We're going to provide you information today about why the number is smaller than projected and the implications that has for our school district. Before we review the first slide, though, I do want to address a point that's critically important. It would be easy and incorrect to assume that this is a conversation only about market share among charter schools, home schools, private and public schools. It's a piece of it. This conversation is much larger than that. Both the birth rate in Wake County and the number of school-aged children is slowly declining. In other words, there are simply fewer children. Period. School choice is having an effect on our enrollment numbers, but if we focus solely on market share, we are not focusing on other important factors. As you know, we have reported slower growth in each of the past three years. At that time, however, we still expected birth rates and the number of school-aged children to increase. That is not happening. It is now clear to the county, the school system, and our municipal planners that we are looking at a new trend. As you will see in the coming slides, this is going to require we review all of our assumptions. We won't get into all of the details today. This will occur at an upcoming facilities committee meeting next week and then again at the next -- or its next work session, as needed. The purpose of the presentation today is to start the conversation with proper context and understanding of what is and what isn't happening. I'd like to introduce you to those that are today making the presentation, beginning with WCPSS Chief of Staff Lloyd Gardner, Wake County Government's Chief Financial Officer Emily Lucas, and Mike Miller of Numerex, who is our contact with the Operations, Research, and Education Laboratory, or Ed, at NC State. Joining them are additional staff members from the county and the school system to help answer questions. We do ask that you please hold your questions until Mike, Emily, and Lloyd have completed the presentation. We've tried to address as many questions as we think we can anticipate in the presentation itself. And we're going to begin by showing you how enrollment forecasts are made.
Good afternoon.
Before we get into the detail of the projections, we want to take a moment to explain for you who is involved in creating these projections and how those projections are created. This first slide, huge illustration that really highlights the team-based collaborative approach to this process. Data points are collected from Wake County planners and municipal planning agencies, our school district, and the Northern State Department of Operations, Research, and Education Lab, often referred to as ORED. Data points are collected, and all of these groups together work collaboratively with Numerex. Now, as part of this team process, data points are collected from the county regarding economic and demographic data. Our school district provides enrollment figures and any data related to enrollment trends. And together, this data is collected collectively and examined to make these projections. And looking at the next slide, we want to share with you, after having just highlighted the roles each of these representative groups play on the core team, how this information is actually used. At the very beginning, the process starts with Wake County providing enrollment data at the end of the second month. This data is then combined with planning data and any historical enrollment data, historical trends that we have. And then those forecasts are created. We make adjustments to these data points annually to reflect any changes in enrollments, birth rates, school-age residents, and parental choice. Good afternoon. Deciding when one trend has ended and another has started is one of the most difficult decisions to make when working with these forecasts. Forecasts are based on past behavior. When such behavior changes, so does the forecast. Slide four shows select years of annual adjustments in the 10-year forecast since 2012. It is easier to hit enrollment targets when there is little variation from year to year in the variables that affect the forecast. The past five years, however, have seen significant amounts of change in several key areas. Among these changes are a reduced population of school-aged children in the county, lower birth rates, and an increasing number of school choices. Those school choices have also undergone changes. The state's decision to lift the charter school cap triggered a quick increase in charter school enrollment. The state's decision to buy private school vouchers appears to be having an effect on enrollments, although it will not be yet accurately measured. And home schools have also increased in popularity. Recalculating enrollment forecasts for Wake County Public School System based on new assumptions produces dramatically different long-range forecasts. In this chart, the dark blue bars represent the long-range enrollment forecast we made last year. The light blue bars represent the new forecast we are releasing today. Based on these recalculations, the school district is projected to enroll about 3,500 more students in 10 years compared to the forecast of more than 20,000 students using previous work from the forecast team. While it seems obvious, or seeming clearly, that changes in market share cannot account for such a significant recalculation. Following slides, take a closer look at what is driving this new forecast.
This chart helps illustrate the importance of the birth rate on long-range enrollment forecasts. The yellow line shows kindergarten enrollment in the Wake County Public School System. While the pink line shows the number of births five years earlier, so you can see the correlation between the two. In this chart, 2009 was the year the state required kindergarteners to be five years old in August instead of October, which effectively reduced the number of eligible students that year. You can also see the effect of the state's decision to remove the charter school cap in 2012, which brought five new charter schools to Wake County in three years. To put the previous chart in perspective, it wasn't unusual for birth rates to increase as much as 4% or more between 1995 and 2007. The year before these shown in the chart. The year 2000 recorded a record birth rate increase of more than 8.5%. We are predicting a less than 2% in future years. And as you can see, there are years in the future where the birth rate is also expected to decline again. This next chart shows the decrease in children aged five in Wake County over time. One of the most obvious reasons for slower enrollment growth is fewer five-year-olds who live in the county. This is pretty self-explanatory over the historical period. Looking at all children ages five to 17, you can see there are similar trajectories of school-aged children in the county and school system enrollment. You can also see a slight increase in the two blue trend lines at the top of the slide. That gap represents the percentage of children who do not attend Wake County Public Schools. While the increase in students attending non-Wake County Public Schools is not dramatic, a shift of just 1% can translate into more than 1,500 students. This slide, which comes from census data, offers insight into current and projected enrollments. The dark blue bars show the percentage of Wake County residents by age in 2007. The light blue bars show the percentages for the same age ranges in 2017. We can see that the percentage of children aged five to nine has decreased during that time. Those are the kids that are in our schools today. We can also see that the percentage of children under five has also decreased. This is partly why fewer students are expected. In addition, it is worth noting that the percentage of residents in the age groups of 25 to 44 years is declining, a time when many people have children.
Here's a closer look at the factors that affect market share. You can see the enrollments have increased from about 8,000 students in 2014-15 to more than 13,000 students today attending charter schools. Charter school enrollments are increasing throughout the state, not just in Wake County, with the addition of state-approved charter schools every year. The number in this graphic represents Wake County children eligible to attend Wake County Public School System by choosing charter schools in or near the county. We do know that some of these students return to Wake County Public School System during Similarly, home enrollment, homeschool enrollment has seen an increase in Wake County from about 9,500 in 2013-14 to 12,600 last year. While it is not shown here, the number of families choosing home schools has also increased statewide and nationally. A similar pattern can be seen for private schools where enrollment has increased from about 16,000 to 50 in 2013-14 to more than 18,000 last year. Private and home schools will not report their 2018-19 enrollment data until July of 2019. Slide 13 provides a picture of the K-12 choices parents are making in Wake County. Again, the most important point of this presentation is that current forecast suggests there will be fewer school-aged students for all providers in the coming years. However, an overwhelming majority of families attend Wake County Public Schools.
Though the overall population of the growth has slowed in Wake County, there are still some areas in the district where growth rates remain abnormally high. This is a chart true that shows the western and southern parts of the county growing with the red areas. The red highlights in this chart represent the fastest-growing areas based on the county's residential growth projections. You can see, also see the location of six new schools that will be completed or started using some of the bond money that voters approved in November. All are in high-growth areas. While it is easy to focus on the new schools, it is critical to understand that only about 1/3 of the bond amount approved in 2018 was for new schools. Most of the money from the $548 million bond approved by the voters will be spent on renovations and facility improvements such as heating, AC, and classroom technology. We've also marked the approximate location of Parkside Elementary near Morristown on this map. While not part of the 2018 bond package, it is scheduled to open in July in another high-growth area.
The uneven nature of our growth in our district, especially when you couple it with the state's K-3, the new class size fall, creates an immediate need that almost seems contrary. Specifically, we anticipate that the board will need to review and potentially approve potential enrollment caps at some schools even as early as this month, given some high-density areas in what you see reflected on the chart there. This chart is provided by our facilities department, and it shows the number of seats gained or seats lost at the elementary level in the planning regions. The new K-3 student-teacher ratios means we've actually lost capacity in some areas where we've opened new schools. You can see in the planning area where Morristown is located, the capacity created by constructions of new schools is actually dwarfed by the rapid enrollment growth that we've experienced in that area. A more detailed chart of this can be provided in your board attachments that will also show the middle and high school enrollment figures, similar to what you see here with elementary. Before we conclude and provide opportunity for questions, I just want to offer some additional thoughts. As Emily Lucas mentioned, about 2/3 of the bond funds that were approved in November are going to be spent to modernizing and rebuilding buildings, rebuilding schools, as well as upgrades to air conditioning, heating, infrastructure, and technology. These needs are not tied to enrollment growth, as we see. And the location of new schools, as you see on any of our maps, are actually matched very nicely and very closely with any of the high-density growth patterns that we're experiencing in our district. The slowing growth that we are experiencing does afford us the opportunity to reduce crowding at some of our overburdened schools and actually catch up on deferred maintenance. As Kathy has said, we'll return to this discussion in future meetings, but I think it's worth noting at this point of the opportunity that we can see through some of this slowing of growth. Wake County spent a number of years chasing growth, and as such, many of our instructional core areas, or core operational areas, rather, outside of the classroom are now in significant need of attention. Most importantly, it is important that our parents, our community, and media critically understand that the enrollment for this year, although it came under projections, does not affect our ability to support students at the current levels that we are supporting them. Even though our enrollment fell below our projections, the actual effect on our budget is small. In fact, specifically, when you look at it, our state adjustments will probably equal less than 1/2 of 1% of our total operating budget. To close and reiterate some of our comments that have been made earlier, focusing solely on our 2018-19 enrollment and our district share would cause us to miss the bigger point. We are now looking at a new lens, and as you can see, the data points are suggesting a new trend for all school-aged children, as well as how we forecast them with regard to our trends in enrollment. We need to look at the number of all school-aged children in Wake County based first and foremost on more birth rates, combined with a slightly older county population and more educational choices for all families. We need to consider this new trend as we continue to address the needs of all of our students and families. And so, as had been mentioned to you earlier, you have some reports that have been provided in your attachment. I'll just call your attention that you have provided a summary memo that captures a lot of this enrollment information that has been shared with you today. You also have a detailed report of the new forecast, and you also have a membership map and capacity by region, all in your documents for your further review with a lot more detail attached to it. Well, now I'll open it up for any questions that you may have from any of us, and we'll try to address them as best we can. Thank you.
Tables open up for discussion and questions. Let me go ahead and begin, then. I appreciate the conversation and the details. In trying to understand the market share versus demographic shift difference, as you know, I spent some time over the weekend digging through DPI numbers. And if my analysis is correct, DPI gives, of course, the average daily membership, the membership of the last day of the month. But then they also give a number which is a plan number, which, to the best of my understanding, is sort of the prediction for the upcoming year. When I look at those numbers, we get the information that we have about Wake County Public Schools, you know, off by the, not quite 2,000, although from their numbers, it's a little over 2,000. But again, that was because we don't, that didn't give the second month, which tends to be higher than the first month. When I looked at the charter numbers, the charter difference from the prediction was, as I recall, nearly 5% off, whereas we were about 1% off. Can you substantiate those numbers if that is, we talked about the charters having grown by 1,500, but based on the DPI plan, they were planning to grow by about 905, more than that 1,500. And so if you scale that to the relative size, I'm sorry, that different, which year is which? Look at my numbers. Yeah, 905 difference. So, that's 6.2% miss on projections, whereas Wake County's was a 1.4% miss on the projection. So, is that correct, and does that further substantiate that we're really looking at a demographic shift more than a market share shift?
I can't substantiate the charter miss in there. We do have that data. I haven't sliced it that way, though.
Am I correct that the DPI plan numbers are their projected numbers?
Yes, initially, yes.
Right.
Yes. And I do believe you're correct in that. All signs point to a pretty significant demographic shift in the county as a whole. Many board members will remember as years in the past coming up here and saying things like, "We haven't seen any kindergarten growth in three years or four years." And now we have data that looks like that's not just an issue with Wake County Public School System. It's also the county as a whole. According to census projections, doesn't look like we're moving at all. In fact, the number of age five has actually decreased over the last few years. So, I think it is a larger issue just enrollment for Wake County Public Schools.
Mr. Fletcher?
A couple of questions. We've seen the gap between live births and enrollments five years later for some time. Do we know where these children go? Now, as I understand from having talked with you previously, the live births are children who are residents in Wake County. So, it's not someone from Johnston County who's born in Wake County that's not in these numbers. These are Wake County live births. Do we have any idea where these children go? When they're leaving the county, and I'm surprised to see that much ongoing persistent exodus of young people.
Yes.
And their parents, obviously.
Fast answer is no, in between when they're born and when they show up to kindergarten. That's a five-year kind of gray area that we don't have very good information on. But I can tell you, since the eligibility change back in 2009, the ratio of kindergarteners to resident live births from five years previous averages in the low 90%, where before that shift, we were getting above 100%. So, there was a dramatic shift at that point, and we started at that point getting fewer and fewer of the resident live births.
A clarification question. I see Parkside was added to slide 14. Were the Parkside numbers added to slide 15?
K-3 legislation.
Yeah, I'm thinking we gained seats at Parkside Elementary, but it may not be reflected on slide 15.
That is correct.
All right, so that's an 800-student school?
Numbers are as of this school year. Parkside will obviously add seats for the current.
Okay, but Parkside's an 800-student school in round numbers?
Yes.
That's a multi-track school. It's 800. Okay. So, that would adjust these, we still, we still are 400 seats short in the Morristown area, and just name the best place in the world to live is going to continue to grow.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Even with Parkside not reflected, it still notes the uneven growth and how the losses.
Right, absolutely.
And seats in certain high-density areas in the county.
We haven't had the chance to look at that in as much detail, but is it pretty much the same geographic trends for the middle and high?
I believe so.
I mean, you noted that that data is in our supplemental material we have mentioned.
I'm focusing on the S primary of elementary because of the impact of K-3.
Because the K-3.
Class size, so I don't want to misspeak to the patterns at middle and high, but I would anticipate it might be.
I've touched on trailers, so we have about 20% of our capacity at the elementary level is in trailers. And that's one way, Dr. Gardner talked about chasing growth, which we've done for decades now. And that's one strategy we've had, is trailers, but that's a burden on the core. So, what do some of these trends tell us about trailers, perhaps more at the middle and high school level, as well as the elementary?
Well, I think that's a discussion we're going to have to have as we are looking at any of the enrollment caps that we have to consider for these schools and how trailers and park. I don't know that we've had the extension of that discussion. We have to exactly see what we will do with trailers yet. But Christine wants to add anything about trailers?
I think the main thing is that our existing elementary schools are pretty much similar. I think the main thing is that our existing elementary schools are pretty much saturated with trailers. Obviously, there is some opportunity to add a couple here, a couple there, and with the new schools, some more, but really, it's a small amount that we'd be able to realize. Certainly, we do have, you know, schools that still have a dozen-plus trailers on their campuses that are streaming to our form facilities, and we would like to see those numbers come down.
But we'll note that those are also in the areas where, that still have the high growth. Right, exactly. So, if we would take the children from the high-growth areas and bus them to the low-growth areas, then we're fine from a seat capacity, but I don't think anybody's going to suggest doing that. Well, I think we could try to, like, to address trails. I'm not sure we'll have quite the luxury, even afforded a bit, to be able to do that, given some of the differences in growth patterns that we see. I do think that's part of looking at what we do with the operational core outside of the classroom now, and I'm not sure to the degree that we're actually going to be able to remove a sufficient number of trailers based on enrollment patterns.
Well, for the last several years, the county has been publishing data relative to different levels of need among our citizens. They've identified places where there's absence of food supply, where there's absence of recreational opportunities, where there are concentrations of people in need of health and human services support. And I'm wondering how that data collection and analysis over the last several years might inform us about our changing demographic and what, and some factors that may be exacerbating the diversity, or the absence of diversity in many of our schools. We're seeing concentrations of need that are getting more concentrated based on the county data that we've looked at over time. So, any reflection on how that might be just something for us to consider as we look at these demographic trends?
Yeah, and as part of this enrollment forecast, we didn't look at that specifically, but I think there's an opportunity, especially through the Facilities Committee and the Joint Facilities Core Team, to take the enrollment of data in the forecast and combine it with some of that data to think about how you want to plan your next bond program and things like that, so we can certainly think more.
Okay. All right, thank you. As a Realtor, and having sat through numerous hearings this past year where parents have been forced to move out of county to maintain housing, I'm wondering what affordable housing or the absence thereof is doing to shift this demographic. We've had numerous hearings of parents who've had to move to neighboring counties and requesting to keep their kids in Wake County schools, which is a heart-wrenching thing. I mean, the state says you live in the county, that's the county you go to. We've had more this year than I can remember, lots of times of rental properties being converted into a sale and displacing the family. So, I just, I think that's another factor for us to talk about in terms of our total community and how we provide a robust, supportive series of services for our families.
It goes back to that gap you were noting earlier between where our kids may be exiting the county.
Right.
Does affordable housing have a factor playing into that, even at that early age?
That certainly is a joint interest with the county commission.
Yeah, and the county's made some, county's made some good steps forward, I have to mention.
I know, at the very beginning, Superintendent Moore explained that this is, and you've all done a great job of explaining, this is, so this is not just market share, but I feel I need to let you know that constituents in District 1, particularly in the north part of the county and the eastern part of the county, they are extremely concerned about the impact of different educational opportunities and the impact on their schools that, you know, whether the data shows it's not as dramatic as they feel it is, I would love for us to have something concrete to present to those families, to listen to their concerns specifically, to address that, to address their concerns.
Thank you for your point. I think we recognize that there are certain parts of our district which there have been more charter schools that have opened than have other, and thus had an impact on most schools in that specific area, and this has become part of our discussion in light of that, of how we move forward, addressing and supporting those existing schools in light of the increased number of charter schools and even the projected number of charter schools slated to continue opening in our district, where they might be located. So, it is part of the larger discussion. I appreciate your comment on that. We certainly understand how this communities are feeling, because as we work with every superintendent, we work with those schools directly, we're hearing it, we're seeing it, and it has become part of our discussion in the context of this, so thank you.
Thank you. I can add to that. I think it's important, and maybe some information that might be helpful, is we focused on the dollars that were going to the new schools, but also to focus on where we are making improvements to existing schools and where that is throughout the county and how that might be helpful to the folks in the district as well.
How would you access existing schools and what might be the difference?
So, I think if we're going to have a discussion with our constituency about the concerns they have about the public school system, I think constituency needs also have municipality governments there as well, and the county government, because I believe that we're all in this together as far as building new subdivisions, building, allowing charter schools to go in, our public schools trying to be healthy. So, if we're going to meet with constituency, I think that we'll do this with the municipality government as much as our county, but probably even more municipalities.
So, again, I want to make it very clear that we, as Wake County Public School System, need to own the market share issues and do this exact work. So, when we look at, when we look at these numbers, I want the public to recognize that this is not just a defense of, oh, the numbers are bad, it must be demographics. We want to own the issues of market share because we believe Wake County Public Schools are the best place for education. I can say that very strongly as a parent of two Wake County Public School System graduates who are both doing very, very well. I want that same opportunity for every child at the same time. We need to, we need to own the market share issues, but we also need to look at the demographic issues. Interestingly, not to jump the steer your thunder, Mr. Hagerty did a little bit of mapping where the charter schools are and how did that map onto the plus-minus growth that we saw for the elementary schools. And correct me if I'm wrong, but there really was not a whole lot of correlation.
That's right.
So, again, that points to that this issue, right, the market share issue is a real issue that we've got to address, but this particular issue of missing the growth projections does not seem to be highly correlated to where those charter schools opened up. So, again, it's multivariable, there's a lot of stuff going on here, we want to own both, but we also need to recognize that this number is actually, doesn't overlap with where the charter schools opened.
Just one more observation. We're talking about 42 net growth. We're talking about 13,000 students graduated, a lot more whose families relocated outside of Wake County or within Wake County. We're talking about a new kindergarten class that came in and those incoming students from the Northeast, Midwest, California, and so the net was 42. A lot of movement within that and a lot of shifting of where people choose to live within that number. So, it's not a static situation. It is very dynamic with all 100, the families of 160,000 students able to make those choices each year. Where do I want to live? I mean, it's a very dynamic situation. To say only 42 is really underselling the massive movement of families by choice and coming into the school district.
Well, to your point, Mr. Fletcher, on the movement, if we look at the, from DPI numbers, the average daily membership of Wake County Public Schools to, for month one, to the membership on the last day of month one, that difference increased by 1,606 students. That's in one month.
Yeah.
So, when you look across the demographics of a year, this is not a single number, and so our number of 42 is a little bit like having a one-performance number to describe all of the students in a school. We know that's not effective. Again, I don't want to minimize the projection issues, but I want us to make sure that it's in context, because as you note, the turbulence is quite hot.
So, if I could, could we go back to Slide 14? So, could you help me understand the projections a little bit better in terms of how you arrived at them here? We have a slide that shows these areas of hotspots for growth, but then we're changing the forecast for the number of incoming students. Do you know in those hotspots, is it just that new growth is older demographic or childless demographic, or how do we, how do you reconcile?
Those hotspots represent student growth.
Student growth.
Yes. And what you're looking at is a disaggregation of county live growth into smaller areas, so we're able to identify. Do the work that I do and ORE, so this is the first part of the forecast process. After we get the system-wide forecast, we go through and disaggregate, and that's where municipal data really helps us identify which areas are growing in a very high resolution and which areas are not growing, so that's where this is coming from.
So, then even with the system-wide recalculation, we still know that those areas you've identified are still projected for high student enrollment.
And as an example, inside the Apex Urban Service Area this year, they gained 620 K-12 students inside Apex Urban Service Area, so there's often a mixture of both a lot.
So, as we go forward with projections, and we'll talk about this, I'm sure, in more detail in the Facilities Committee meeting, can you help us understand the way we, well, here we get projections as sort of a whole school system on a single trajectory. Given we've got the market share issues with the charter schools, a majority of our charter schools are K-8, and there is much more K-8 capacity than there is high school capacity among the charters. Not to mention, I believe, we see from homeschool and whatnot that there's plenty of people who come into the Wake County Public School System for high school, being at the university. I know that universities like Wake County Public Schools' high school diploma because of what that means. So, how do we, how do we factor the differential high school growth versus the, it may be K-8, it may be that the 68 is different than the K-5? Help us understand a little bit. And again, I know this detail will come more later, but as we think about this process shifting away from, right, because the numbers you gave us on the next slide are a difference of 34 instead of the 42, that tells us middle and high are different. So, how do we understand the difference between the overall projection from maybe a more targeted projection where we've got different growth rates?
ORE collects municipal and county data every year, so that's being updated right now, running models at this time. And each year, we do an analysis that looks at exactly that. If you buy Urban Service Area, what are the, I call them advancement properties. So, how are students moving through the system in Wake Forest or how are they moving through the system in Apex? So, each of those subareas has its own characteristic, and within those subareas is where you see those shifts in grade level. So, you may see a higher retention of high school students in one area and a lower retention of high school students in another area of the county. So, that's our attempt to try to break this system-wide picture up into smaller pieces with a uniform characteristic.
If I can, just going, sort of piggybacking off your question and mentioning that many of the charter schools right now are K through 8, but as that age, as they get older, right, so, but will there be charter, you know, schools targeting students in grades 9 through 12 as there is a need, a higher need for that, if students stay in that type of school? So, that's, I'm just...
Again, we could look at the charter's charter.
Right.
And the charter history, and based on the charter's charter, we don't see a lot of addition of high school. We see a lot more of addition of K-5 or K-8.
Right. I don't mean the specific charters themselves, I mean, new charters, you know, for like the...
Exactly. That could happen, we don't know.
There's no organized planning to coordinate different organizations to create that map.
Right.
So, it would be an ad hoc opportunity for someone to choose to do that.
Again, it's things we need to be keeping in mind.
Right.
It's the crystal ball that we wish we had.
Oh, and a random note, that's not related directly to this, but it is for me, is, I mean, I think, I think every board member's done a great job making sure that we're clear on the narrative around the variables, because there are multiple that impact where we are. But I also think it's our job to remind people that we have over 160,000 students, that we do have to educate, and they are going to still coming back to us.
Every day.
Every day. And so, I mean, I think as a board, it's our responsibility to also to continue to frame the narrative around the work that is still before us. Given this is dominating the narrative, our core business, we are still in business with the vast number of our students, and so I think it's important to remind the public that that's our priority.
Absolutely, and I want to appreciate staff's highlighting that we have been chasing growth for a very long time, as long as I think all of us have been on the board. And so, this may give us an opportunity to start doing some of that systemic work that we know needs to be done but have not been able to do because of growth. So, thank you for highlighting that, and that, again, is our commitment and our partnership with the county, I believe, to highlight some of this work. And again, to not get worried about the numbers quite as much as Superintendent Moore has suggested on a couple of occasions, if you think about this number of, let's say, 1,800 students, that's 10 per school in our, in our schools. So, if you take a, right, our average school population is going to be somewhere 1,000-ish, right? Our high schools are much more than that, our elementary schools are a little bit lower than that. A number of 10 per school is very small. Back to our core work is every child, every day.
Eight of 10 students in Wake County.
Or in Wake County public schools, yeah. That's a lot.
Any other comments, discussion?
Well, we will be continuing this discussion relative to the K3 and camping, I believe, in our Facilities Committee meeting on Wednesday next week, and please come, y'all.
Thanks for the attention.
You're welcome. You're always welcome, but particularly next year.
I know, but it's just such a lovely invitation.
Y'all come.
So, talking about facilities, will we, when will we get an opportunity to talk about how we decide what schools? So, renovation has been very unfunded. I mean, not, not because we chose to, but when will we start to talk about how we prioritize schools on the unfunding or on the renovation?
The following month, I believe.
Following month.
Yeah.
We just want to be sure I pledge that one more time.
Absolutely.
No, absolutely, and as Dr. Gardner noted, or many people noted, that even in this current bond, we're more heavily weighted toward renovation than we had historically done in the capital improvement plans, and Brian, you may be able to correct me, but I think we're still somewhere on the order of 10% of our square footage is over 40 years old without major renovation?
If not, a little bit more.
Yeah.
That's right. And to your point, I think the capital improvement plan, the bond phase of that, two-thirds is dedicated to the existing students, existing staff, existing school. One-third of that is related to some of the new schools... One-third of that is related to some of the new schools you see on here in those high-density areas. But again, the capital plan itself is meant to be updated annually, fluid, adjust to some of this. Be neat, in its totality, the lifecycle and everything else exceeds what funding's available. So it's really about the prioritization. We'll have the opportunity to have those discussions started next week and continue along.
Okay. Any other final thoughts? Thank you all.
Thank you.
The work continues. Okay, we'll transition then into a discussion of multi-track year-round schools.
Kristen Fairclough is in the house.
On the map.
Well, I got an itty-bitty triangle on the western border that's probably got more students than most of the other triangles on the map. I'm sure they'll explain that to us. Well, it's a three-dimensional, I mean, that, that has a different value than this does, but it's not in legend as to what that is.
As to why they're, one are little, the big ones?
This is F and R.
This is a review of the map I did back in 2015.
So it's in the title.
Do you have attachments on that?
Oh, we have to get up and move around for this.
Just close out your browser and then...
They had enough of you already. They had four months of you.
No offense taken.
Why didn't they anticipate having this much time?
Well, we have, we have a knack of consuming.
He does.
All right. You open the door. Hi. You guys ready? All right, so staff is bringing to you a multi-track year-round schools discussion. Why are we here? So I've spoken with several of you over the last several months about year-round schools. We had plenty of conversations when we opened up Buckhorn Creek about year-round schools. Families wanted year-round in that area. We ended up opening up Buckhorn Creek on the traditional calendar. And then that spawned a conversation of, you know, when we look at Bossa Ridge Middle School and Parkside, and so staff decided to look a little bit deeper into year-round schools and the data that surrounds them. So I gave you a lot of data, and I don't expect you to digest it right now. What we're going to do is, we're going to introduce this data to you, give you a little history, and then we're going to do a small, like, small little exercise to collect some information, give you some homework, and then we'll come back for future discussions on this. This is not going to be a one-shot deal. This is going to be a several-meeting exercise. So I just want you to feel comfortable with the data you got today that you're not expected to know and understand it right now, okay? Because it is a lot to digest. We originally started with some data, and as we kept digging and digging, we had a lot more, and so I felt like it was really important for you to really get the whole picture of what's going on here. So what we really want to do here is have a discussion about the purpose of year-round schools, and do our current practices surrounding year-round schools align with Policy 4150, which is our, the four pillars, which is what drives student assignment. So to give you a little bit of history for some of you who may have not been here or may not remember, but prior to 1989, heat district members, specifically in the magnet office, were searching for new and innovative school ideas, and year-round schools was one of the topics that came up, that they were looking at. And so they introduced that at Kingswood Elementary. And at the same time, the county was starting to have projected explosive growth, which kind of goes hand-in-hand with the conversation we just had. And so at that time, they felt like this was a good opportunity for the district to be fiscally responsible in the sense that we're going to use the increased capacity in order to have to build less schools with this projected growth that was coming. I want to go back. So what, oops. So one of the schools that they opened was, the very first was Morrisville Elementary. Now, Kingswood was on the year-round calendar, it was by application only, and I believe it was track four only for that first two years. And then they moved to Morrisville Elementary, along with Morrisville Elementary being a complete application-only school that opened in the 1991-92 school year. By, so, let me go back. 10 schools ended up opening on the year-round calendar over the next 10 years, okay? And all of these schools would be filled by application only, with the exception of Wilburn Elementary, which had a base attendance area. And then by 2006, 2007, there were 20 schools on the year-round calendar. The next year, 2007, 2008, four new schools opened, all again year-round, to deal with the growth, and the board at that time converted 22 schools to year-round, okay? Again, to deal with the projected growth that was happening, the rapid growth that's happening in our county. In 2007, Wake County introduced traditional calendar options for families with a base school on the year-round calendar. And that was in response to a, conversations that were being had about can you force families onto the year-round calendar? And so the result of that was to offer traditional calendar options for families that they could apply to. Beginning in 2009, the board at that converted six schools back to the traditional calendar by the end of the 2010-11 school year. So you see, we had opened a bunch of schools on year-round, we converted some schools to year-round, and then the board at that time scaled that back. Since then, we have opened year-round schools in areas where we've needed the capacity, albeit Bossa Ridge and Parkside. So I wanted to just bring Policy 4150 to your attention, I know many of you know this better than you'd like to know. But two points and two pillars of the policy are really important for this discussion. Student achievement and operational efficiency, okay? The proximity and stability don't really play into this, because that has to deal with, you know, are we allowing students to remain at the school with grandfathering rules according to the plan? And proximity, where are the base attendance areas assigned? So that's not really part of this discussion. What we really want to look at is, are we minimizing under-enrolled schools? Are we minimizing overcrowded schools? Are we maximizing transportation efficiencies? And then also looking at student achievement, okay? Minimizing high concentrations of low-performing students at each school. Minimizing high concentrations of students from low-income families at each school. Now, this is important, looking at this moving forward, okay? Because as, as you can remember, I talked about how year-round schools were by application only, okay? And I know many of you hear from your constituents pros and cons about year-round schools, and I want you to think about that in these discussions today, that'll help you drive some of the feedback that we'll be getting and giving, okay? So the data, data tables and maps, so the maps that you have in front of you, there are three different maps, okay? One deals with student achievement, and that's student achievement data from 2017, 2018, okay? There's free and reduced lunch data.
Do they make it in order?
Again, see it?
Are they in that?
They're labeled up at the top, I'm not sure which order they were placed in. And then you have facility utilization that's crowded. So student achievement data and FRL data, those are from 1718, okay? And the icons on the maps, you see triangles and circles. I believe it's the triangles are the elementary schools, circles are the middle schools, we're only showing elementary and middle schools, obviously, because we're talking about year-round schools, okay? The larger, the, what do you call that, an icon?
Yeah.
I guess, or symbol, represents the, higher the percentage, okay? So you can see that difference throughout the county. There's also a table of the data on the sides of the maps that will help you understand what those symbols mean. The colors represent the different calendars, okay? And then along with that, you have a packet of information here, okay? Let's start with this, okay? This first page is, we're going to work in groups, a little bit today, but mostly moving forward, we're going to be working in groups, and we put you into three different groups, and you can see those groups there. And then whenever we work in those groups at this table, we give you a little map of where you're going to sit, okay? The next two pages are the SWOT charts that Ms. Susan Andrews will explain to you as part of our exercises. But I want you to skip to the next pages, where you start to see now the student data, okay, the school data. So these, the first chart, is three pages long, and this is, the schools listed alphabetically on the left-hand side. You've got the calendar type, because I know often you ask me what type of calendar they are, so I have you.
You also have it over maps.
I have it over maps, too.
I'm so excited.
Okay? So then you have three different columns, which basically, this is going to summarize the three different maps. So I gave you a visual, and then I gave you this individual data here, so you can see each school, how it would measure out, okay? So you have, the first column is the student achievement data, the middle column, FRL, and then the capacity, the utilization with trailers. Now, utilization with trailers, we used, I think it was last week, 1/4, 2019, we used that crowding percentages, because it represents more of the K-3 class-size legislation concerns that we have about the crowding at the schools. So it doesn't 100% correlate with the students that are represented in the first two columns, it does give you a snapshot of the crowding concerns at the particular schools at this time, noticing the loss of seats due to K-3 class-size legislation, okay?
This is with K-3 fully implemented?
This is with our next year's allotment, so it's 18, 16, 20, 20.
Okay.
So it's not fully all the way.
It's more torture.
Yeah. But I feel like it's important, because it gives you an actual reading of the issues we're having at these particular schools right now, okay?
Do you like that?
So the first three pages, again, will go through all of your elementaries. Page four of that will, will list all of the traditional calendar schools, I mean, the middle schools. There's a couple of things I wanted to note on this, and you'll see it in the data tables as we go a little bit further. We did have some schools change some calendars. The calendar types that are listed on this sheet are the calendar types that they are today. So East Cary is listed as a year-round school, even though we're proposing to change it to, or it's going to be changed to a traditional calendar for next year. East Garner and East Wake Middle Schools are listed as modified calendars here, but when we go to the charts a little bit later, I have an asterisk for them, because at the time when we collected this data in 1718, they were on track four only, okay, or traditional for East Garner. So I captured them in that data that we collected at that time, okay? And then I gave you, each of your district pages teased out just for you. So you'll see everyone's district, and you can go to your district. I think I put your district first, and then it goes 1 through 9 after that, so you'll have duplicates of your own. But I wanted you to get a snapshot of your own individual data, so that you can look at that and review.
I love this. I love this.
I tried, I tried.
I mean, you took, you literally took everything we asked for.
I know, I love this.
I guess I had good practice, right? I'm here to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this, this is a lot to take in, and again, I want to reiterate, I'm not trying to make you make decisions today, I just want you to be able to have an opportunity to review this, and we will have multiple discussions about this. I want to be very clear about something, I wish the TV cameras were still here. This is not about trying to get rid of year-round schools. Absolutely not, that is not what staff is recommending. We are trying to be responsible with our facilities and all of the new information that we have, and what are we going to do to best serve all the families in Wake County schools and make all of our schools the top choice for all students, okay? So I want to be very clear that we have no agenda in trying to change the calendar or get rid of year-round calendar schools, we're simply looking at the data and what is it telling us, okay? So moving on, we're going to do a small exercise first, and we'll break you up into those groups, but first I'll introduce Ms. Susan Andrews, who used to work with us in professional development, and she's really good at keeping you guys organized and keeping you on task, so that's why I brought her in, okay?
Have you ever done that with us before?
I have.
With us? No. I mean, she's different.
Well, that's why I brought in the guest.
Yeah, she kept it best, good.
So I'm going to turn it over to her, and then she's going to share a couple of things with you, and then I'll wrap it up at the end with you guys, okay?
So just a little background, I have worked with school board before, just not this current school. It's just been that perspective. I think that addresses what you were asking.
Well, yeah, this is very particular. Yeah.
Okay, so the first thing I'd like to ask you to do is take three to five minutes to just silently look at the data you have in front of you, and what I'd like you to do is to note any patterns that you see for yourself, because in a few minutes, you're going to be able to talk with a group of three and share those thoughts with them. And I want every voice to be heard, all nine of you, to have something to say, keep us all group. So I want you to look for any patterns you see, anything that's significant or unusual, any outliers, those types of things. How do the maps correlate to the data charts? In a few minutes, after you've had three to five minutes to look at this data and digest a little, then I'll ask you to move to your groupings, and we'll bring in some recorders to help capture your thoughts.
Have you ever done this before, where we had the symbols bigger and littler? Because this is very, it's very good to look at, to see how...
I don't know, I know we've used colors before, like heat map, I don't know if we've used different size symbols, we may have, but...
I did this back in, with the 2014-15 data, but that's before you run the board. I can send you that map if you want.
We did break that.
But yes, this is extremely helpful.
I didn't have this data, it just wasn't, there were like eight different maps, and there wasn't a symbol.
The code.
Yeah. That image, did I make this? Yes.
So let's say probably about like a quarter of, we'll start to get our groups, so we'll give you about five, six minutes.
The circles, the middle school. It's all relative. That's the highest.
Yeah, so where would you be?
I think that, I didn't know that for that last year, that might be the only thing brought to mind.
We have so much, we see these low rates.
Because, I mean, that might come in handy.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, well, where are we?
That's how we got, we had that question. Trigger something for us.
Right, so I would add top one, because he could add that.
You know what, I just thought of another.
This is the bell.
So that's.
Okay, so that's where you.
So I don't know how.
This is probably Carol.
Well, they actually get their numbers.
So you have like.
Right, so we'll get last year's soon.
Fly a big truck, right?
However, I know they've got very.
It's an observation. How do we allow that to happen?
Oh, yeah. Really?
Because they can still include the bell, because they can still include about, because they can still take the bell, but they could, it's less of the pressure.
We're gonna try to do a little bit more.
Just brought the wrong bag.
For seeing the fourth.
Is that like your personal?
Yeah, I just thought I would.
She was prepared. No, not your mom.
I'm gonna ask you, begin to gather your things together, and move to your group location, so that your observers can use your data on your version.
Thank you. Take it back when the one is trying to take it back. Or by those windows.
If you're referred to the chart here, okay?
You are, no, you have to follow.
Group one will be at that end of the table, the far end for me, group two will be down here where I am, and group three will be on my left or right, depending on where you're sitting.
Don't eat my stuff here. Don't get too close to Bill, though.
Can't wait.
The love, the love, just give some breath.
So much love, so much love. She's got the drawers, but she can't say it. So she can mess with hers.
Not gonna do it.
Well, mine was in there whenever you.
Happy New Year. Thank you so much for moving to your groups very quickly, and for your next set of instructions while you're in your small group, you now have a recorder with your group. Their task is to record your comments, so that you don't try to have to have one person that writes everything, we've provided those people for you. So you may want to introduce, have your recorder introduce themselves to you. They will be taking the information that you speak, as well as who said what was said, so that they can take it back to the Office of Student Assignment and compile the information to bring back to you at a later work session, okay? So now, in the next five to seven minutes, I'd like you to share the observations that you noted as you had silent time to work. I'd like the recorders to use a round robin procedure, which means one person in your group begins, and then you, it's kinda like dealing a card deck, you go around the circle, around the group, so that everybody has something to share. If you need to pass, because all of your thoughts have been shared, that's fine, and then if you want to pick back up the next round, because somebody may have said something that gives you some other ideas that you could share, you're welcome to join back into the group. You'll have five to seven minutes to share and let them capture your thoughts. Please only describe what you actually see in the data. Stay away from judgments or interpretations, just indicate what did you see, what did you notice in the data. You will have an opportunity for judgments and interpretations later, but not in this first round. I would like for you to identify for the group where the observation is being made. For example, it was in the first data chart of elementary schools, in the second column, the third number to the right, so that everybody can find the data that you're referring to while you're discussing it. You might use some possible prompts, like, "I observed," or "one pattern or trend that I noticed was," or something like, "I see that this number is something compared to other numbers in the chart." So I would like for the group to determine who will start and talk about what you see. You'll have five to seven minutes within your group. You may begin.
Are you timing?
Yes.
So, I prefer just a set of eyes, that's one positive way to say.
One point, and then go to the next.
Most often occurring.
I am using primarily the maps.
It doesn't matter.
My initial observations.
And that's from the FRL charts.
Highest achievement.
Year-round.
Western County.
Check, which also in the Western County area, also has the lowest.
The highest achievement.
Or we can just say, yeah.
Yes.
That would be repeated.
Right, this kinda was. Interpretations, just can't, just, because I got a few interpretations.
Because lower.
I can. Trying to find, I've got a quick, I had a lot of questions.
It's a lot of.
Okay, so go ahead.
I had a bullet. So I would, in our.
On the western side. Versus that, the lowest percentage.
In percentage order, highest.
Are on the eastern side, also has highest history, reduced percentage.
Student achievement, or FNR, they have some.
I was still going.
Oh, we say one. East is. I noticed there was.
So what is your description? The description's like. Highest. Where I am, it's lower than the middle, it's the lowest year-round.
Elementary.
Right, instead of what I was asking.
Lower, middle. Regardless, so I'll start with one related year-round.
Then the other count.
The lowest crowd, the lowest achievements. Year-round. Very last, and then there are, there's no, there's no, it's year-round traffic, only in the east. So in schools that are. They low, some of the lowest. Either we typically don't. Year-rounds. So US4, so the observation, US401 is a major one for the student achievement. Year-rounds, I don't have a page or section. Really swings around, always, always something, either not towards the. Or not towards the district. Either way. About 70, actually, 75% or more. One in over 70 that are track four. Second elementary school, that's Roger's Lane. They have a high FNR, and it's a year-round school. Roger's Lane is the.
Multi-track.
They're both on, though. 64. That's reverse, that's reverse, I think it's this one here. Highly overloaded with kids. Next to 64 bypass. Not sure what that next choice is. Not the choice of families. Not the choice of district to make. It may be because of district. Very different. The assumption is, utilization. Year-round middle, sorry. A very similar student achievement.
Okay, so.
Not sure where that is. Is it a Niteville school?
I observed on the map.
Also, an observation, there are a number of places where adjacent schools have very different interpretations. And sometimes, there's different FRLs. And a particular. Adjacent school that would come around. My big one's different. Our color is.
The last chart.
Right.
I don't, based on this two maps, I don't observe correlation, I use decision numbers, and.
So there's a small. Sorry. Are you observing? I'm looking at utilization. I'm just starting. The one out east there, it's white.
It's the one that looks like that.
expressly told. They go the other way around, I never really noticed. Look on the last page.
I'm saying the last chart in the package, just guessing.
I don't know what it means, I'm just quite structured, differential. Of our, of our.
Map, because of that.
I mean, traditional calendar.
Either the choice of families, or the choice of districts. If we're being responsive to family. Kind of choice, which is better, how popular. Well, it's fine with that. Low 95%.
For your calendar option.
That, that data.
I'm going to.
I think recent GIS.
Groups, I'm gonna ask you to take one minute to finalize your thoughts. And we're gonna move to the next step in the process.
We have no topic. Correlation you're noticing? Schools that are middle school higher than 100% correlation. across calendar.
Yes.
Thirty-two cents.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was only.
But in District One.
Yes, okay, that's great.
Back.
Questions for you. Which is why.
Dramatically different.
Have we ever done. The mind.
District Three. Where. Haven't done any announcements.
Well, track four only, yes, seven to four percent. District Five. Sorry.
I just thought that might be useful down to.
Well, most of the multi-tracks are dated. Everything else makes a vertical single track.
Planning for this rare, like, hey, we're in a map. Like, I don't know if that's going to be sort of shocking to.
District.
I mean, yes, of course, we.
Right. So look at all of them. Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That part in District.
I was wondering. They may have multi-tracks too. Still assumptions. Yeah. To actually have that.
That's the thing.
No. But you're all, but you're all single tracks.
That's what I'm saying. There's no.
Vibration. I'm not sure. Vibration. It would help fifteen days off every forty-five days. And the reason. Population. We bring the rest of the tracks because we have less of an issue. In their track. They add.
Well, because those used to have over three, not five.
Well, I know that.
But that's what I'm saying. So it's. We have total on the modify. Oh, no, they do. We switch.
So you get that modified.
Higher. Completely. That's the one that was mostly impacted by our changes. And I give it. I mean, I can tell you most of your. Most of their. Well, two. But it's not.
They have very little. But like, look at Bright. There's been a lot. Well, it's rolling house.
Well, it's the data here. There's no reason why.
Well, that's what I'm saying. But.
I'm just going to make a note. What do you calculate? I'm just. I have one. So related. Seeing to see about. I'm actually.
But you're right. And what.
A couple of issues. FRL was relatively balanced. Tracks, which was.
All right, groups, I'm going to ask you to finish up your thoughts.
I don't like achievement numbers because they're. It's the same. I have. I know about.
And while you're in your groups, if you would please find your second page in your packet, which is your SWOT. The big chart with the blanks in it says focusing topic at the top, multi-track year-round calendar utilization. I'd like to explain to you why we've split the chart up the way it is, because this will be part of your work between now and the next time we meet. It's not something for you to complete today at all. But if you'll look, at the top, we put in the groups that you worked in today because we want you to bring this back the next time you come, and then you'll remember what groups you were in if they're across the top. Also, if you look down for strengths, we've given you kind of instructions on what to answer in the blocks to the right. So the first one is strengths. List the strengths of utilizing a multi-track year-round calendar. Consider existing and new schools. In the lens, with the lens of, for Wake County Public School System, what are the strengths of using the multi-track year-round calendar? Then in the next column, in terms of families, what is the strength about utilizing the multi-track year-round calendar? And for students, what is the strength? We've separated families and students because we think in some cases, something that is a strength to a family might not be a strength for a student. Might be a weakness, or it might be.
Or vice versa.
An opportunity, or vice versa. Exactly. So we decided to separate family from student. Now, you may have the same comment in both columns, and that's okay too. That's fine. Under weaknesses, list the weaknesses of utilizing a multi-track year-round calendar. Also consider existing and new schools from all three lenses as well. And then on the next page, opportunities, list any opportunities that you see for utilizing a multi-track year-round calendar. Opportunities for the school system, opportunities for families, opportunities for students.
What's the difference between opportunity and a strength?
A strength may be something that's already in existence. An opportunity may be something we haven't utilized yet. And then threats. List possible threats of utilizing a multi-track year-round calendar. Consider existing and new schools. Under the lens of Wake County Public School System, what might be the threats? For families, what might be the threats? For students, what might be the threats? And a lot of times, again, threats are things we've not realized yet, and it might be something we have no control over. It could be threats that are outside the school system's control. Okay? So if you notice any of those things, it would be listed under the threats column or row.
So if, if there were something that we used to do but aren't doing now, you might call that an opportunity.
Yes. Any other questions about the chart itself? I believe you have this chart digitally as well as a paper version, so that if you pervert a type into a chart, you have that as an access point to. Okay? I'll turn it back over to Glenn.
So this is homework. You want to tell us when homework is due?
He is.
This is exciting for me. I gave you guys something to do now. It's usually.
I think you've been waiting all break.
Yes. Yes. All right, so, again, I've given you a lot of data to digest. I'd like you to take your time, go through it. I will be available if you have any questions you want to call me to discuss or come in and discuss it so that you can understand it completely, because I want you to fill out that SWOT chart for our next meeting. And I'm not gonna, I think I'm going to wait till the first meeting in February. That'll give you some time so that you can listen to your constituents, you can bring it to your B and E Cs, you can do whatever you'd like to do with it. But just make sure that you're filling it out and you're ready to have a group SWOT discussion when we come back. So where you'll share out what you've shared, and then we'll kind of collect information from everybody. And then from there, we'll try to move forward with what our next steps are. I don't want to skip ahead in the slides because I want to wait until we come back and actually do the group SWOT before we move forward. Okay? So, let's, let's plan for the first meeting in December during a work session. We'll come back and do it if we have to. In February, sorry. We're going to have to juggle this a little bit. We'll worry about. Because we've got a number of things on our agenda that we have. And that's why I brought that up, because we don't know if we have to, you know, push it back a little bit further. I just don't want this to fall off and get too far into the spring because, as you know, we start getting into the assignment plan, and I'd really like to try to get this focused, give staff some time to give you some suggestions moving forward that we can implement for the 1920 school year or the 2021 school year at the latest. Okay? I thank you for your patience. I know this is a lot, and I know how you don't like getting data last minute, but I felt like this was a good exercise for you to do. You get it, digest it, and what are you noticing right away? And then as you dig a little bit deeper, you may notice that maybe some of the perceptions that we're having initially aren't real or vice versa, and I want to be able to capture all of that. Because I know what happened for me when I started going through a lot of this data as well. You mentioned, and I appreciate the suggestion of potentially having some of this discussion in our BSEs. In that context, can these maps and data tables? I didn't see the maps in Simly. Could they be uploaded? Yep, everything's been, everything you have received has been loaded to Simly. Yep. And I will get you Word versions of the SWOT so you can type in them as well. Right now, you just have them in a PDF format, but I will get them all to you.
I'm pretty sure this might be easy for some, but Bill and I just talked about earlier about data, and so for track four specifically, even modified to make sure we're all capturing it, when we're doing the SWOT that we're considering if they're multi-track or not.
That's a good, that's a good point.
So that we all do the same thing.
So, do we have group consensus that we want to consider modified and track four only as part of year-round schools because that's how the district currently identifies them? No.
That's what Bill and I were saying. We just had a conversation about we.
So we want to just consider multi-track.
How we do it.
What you have on our SWOT tables says multi-track year-round. Good. And that's what I wanted, so I'm glad that you're not trying. Yes, I want multi-track year-round. So when you look at your data tables, okay, you have multi-track year-round, traditional, track four only, and modified. It's all broken out. Okay? And on the school names here, you have modified, track four only, and year-round. The year-round is multi-track. I really want you to focus on multi-track year-round schools, not the modified or track four only. So if you can use that, when we're using the lens of multi-track year-round, it's just our multi-track year-round schools, not track four and modified. Thank you for clarifying that.
So that is the question, Bill.
Okay? Any other questions? Like I said, I'm available if you want to come in or call or email. I can clarify any questions you may have so that you can perform this exercise. Glenn, do that. Take it? Off line. Okay. All right, well, I'm glad to give you some homework, and I will see you guys next time. Thank you, Glenn. I think this is really important work for us. Are there, are there any board member comments before we let Glenn go on this? Everybody understands their assignment, that you're, I think overall, this is really, we talked about doing this work. It's good to be doing it.
So, just that some of the challenges of the multi-tracks subsystem is the relationship between elementary and middle, and that's not covered here.
That, that can be.
The efficiency of students.
You're talking about having a robust feeder to fill the school year. Yeah. I think that's going to be a byproduct of this conversation.